Start getting ready.
Senator Austin, I think you should ask everybody to mute themselves on Zoom and people that are sitting in the in two seat. Just so that we don't have to, we don't hear everybody's private conversations. So, thanks.
Madam Administrator, how are you doing out there? Alrighty. So, good morning, everybody. We're going to have the Humans Appropriations Committee and Human Services Committee public hearing today on ABI waiver application and block grant allocation plan, renewal of the acquired brain injury waiver two nineteen fifteen C home and community based services Medicaid waiver, and the FY twenty-five community services block grant allocation plan. So Representative Walker, do you have any, anything this morning?
Good morning, everybody. It's great to see everybody and thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Berthel?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and good morning, everyone. Good to see you all. Hopefully, we have a quick, quick meeting and discussion and get back to, back to work.
Representative Nuccio? Senator Lesser?
Good morning, Madam Chair. A little slow finding the mute button. Good to see everybody. Hope everybody's having a great summer. Looking forward to the hearing this morning.
Representative Gilchrist? Senator Semenara?
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Madam Chair. Happy to be here and thank you so much.
Representative Case?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Very good. So, we are, we're gonna have, have a public hearing and first up, we have the DSS team. Who would like to start first? Come on up, guys. The Commissioner is not here today, right? Ladies, if you would identify yourself.
Good morning, chairs. Senator Austin, Representative Walker, Senator Lesser, and Representative Gilchrist, ranking members Senator Berthel, Representative Nuccio, Representative Case, and Senator Semenara, and all members of the Appropriations and Human Services Committees. My name is Isha Canada, and I am a Deputy Commissioner for the Department of Social Services. Commissioner Barton Reeves is unavailable and sends her regrets for not being here today. We are here before the committees with two requests. The first is to renew the acquired brain injury waiver, and secondly, to seek approval of the Community Services Block Grant Allocation Plan. Our acquired brain injury waiver discussion will be led by Christine Weston, the department's director of our Community Options Unit. Our Community Services Block Grant Allocation Plan discussion will be led by Cassandra Northfleet Johnson, the manager of our Office of Community Services Unit. As we begin our discussion today, we want to make note that both programs have separate and distinct rules for which we will be happy to clarify as we go along today. We welcome any questions you may have, and thank you for your continued support. With that, I will hand it off to Christine Weston to share a brief slide deck on our acquired brain injury waiver, followed by Cassie to review the Community Services Block Grant. Thank you.
Go ahead, just identify yourself.
Sure. Hi, good morning. My name is Christine Weston, and I am the Director of Community Options at the Department of Social Services. This is a very brief slide deck for you. It is two slides. The acquired brain injury waiver two is up for its five-year renewal. The Centers for Medicaid and Medicare asks us to renew all of our nineteen fifteen C home and community-based waivers every five years, regardless of the last time it was amended. So this is a, a routine renewal. At this time, we're not raising any amendments to the waiver. We're suggesting to push it forward as is. We have the last, the last amendment was done in November of twenty-three, which implemented some of the COVID relief funds and memorializing some of the things that we did through the public health emergency, and this is just could be a continuation of that last waiver application. So, we are not proposing future changes at this time. There were some public comment that was raised after the public comment period. So, the acquired brain injury community, the families, the providers, as well as the Brain Injury Alliance of Connecticut are very strong advocates for this program. And they did raise some concerns and some questions that they wanted us to evaluate, but we didn't really have time to fit this into this renewal with really the amount of engagement we wanted to do with the providers and the family members and the participants. So this is going through with no recommended changes right now, but we plan to hold focus group discussions with each of the stakeholders and hear their concerns and their recommendations for change, and then potentially raise an amendment with those changes in the near future. So this last slide is just background on the waiver. I think a number of you may have been familiar with this program over the years. We've listed out the waiver services. It is a broad depth of services that are available to individuals that are on the acquired brain injury waiver two, and they're listed here. So, could take any questions?
Is there anything else on the ABI two? Waiver? No? That's it?
Alright.
For you?
Thank you.
We do have questions. So, I have one question. What were the comments related to that came in on the ABI waiver two? You intimated that there were comments made, but what were they?
Sure. So, what has been raised over time is that it's, the workforce is, is challenging to find individuals that are able to come and support the members on the waiver. And some of the providers have asked us to reevaluate the minimum requirements for some of the services. This could range from educational requirements or experience, length of time of, or experience to provide the service. So we wanted to evaluate that. We wanted to hear from the different sides. We wanted to hear from the stakeholders, the advocates, as well as the family members, and then also do some research for, there's other states that have these, this type of service to see what their requirements are before we were willing to make any changes to the minimum requirements.
So, when do you plan on coming back to us with those recommendations?
So, I have promised a very quick turnaround. So I want to engage all of the groups over the next two months, and then if we're able to present, we want to get this ahead of session. So we were looking to possibly come back end of November, very early December, if we're going to move forward with any of the recommended changes.
Thank you. Senator Lesser?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just following up on your questions, Madam Chair. If we, if you were to submit an amendment to this, just walk us through the CMS approval process, what that timeline takes, and we can, we can then amend this waiver application anytime. How does that work exactly?
Yeah, so, and I do apologize that we weren't able to, it would have been much more ideal to do it with the renewal, but it would be a very similar process. It goes out, we, we post a notice of intent to change the waiver. It opens up another public comment period. We then have to have another hearing on it, and then it would go to CMS, and they would have their sixty days to review and approve. So it would probably be then by February, we would then have, if everything goes according to plan, we would then have that amendment to the December renewal, because this is set to expire the end of November. It'll be a December renewal, and then we'll have an amendment early twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Representative Hughes?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Deputy Commissioner and Director. Can you just remind us how many are using the ABI waiver, and if there are any on the waitlist?
Yeah, so currently, the acquired brain injury waiver two has two hundred eighty-four participants on services. There is a lengthy waitlist, however, which is a few years right now. I believe our current application date is somewhere in two thousand nineteen. I can get the exact next member, and it is on kind of a first come, first served, so we go in order of application date. But we have just under three hundred members on the waiver with a waitlist.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Senator Semenara?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, do you have an idea of how many people are on the waitlist at this time?
I do not have the waitlist numbers, I'm sorry, but I can get that for you. We can take that as a takeaway.
I would appreciate that, and just to reiterate, if we're gonna, you, you are going to reevaluate credentialing, I'm assuming that that doesn't mean that we are in any way, shape, or form going to require anyone who will be providing services that are not qualified to provide those services?
Correct. I think there's, from what I can hear and what I've heard anecdotally, there is recommendations that we're, we're doing some trade-offs for intensive training for some educate, some, the bachelor's degree requirements, or extensive, or two-plus years of experience. They're looking for trade-offs of intensive organized training to have them still build the capacity and the skillset needed to serve the individuals on the, on the acquired brain injury waiver. So it's, it's almost as if there would be potentially a trade-off of intensive training run out of the provider agencies versus the educational requirements, but again, we haven't fully explored it. That was just one of the proposals that was raised.
And, and when you say intensive training, who, who provides that?
Well, it's been suggested that the providers would be responsible for training their staff.
Okay, so developing a, a training program, an official training program?
Yes.
And then would there be testing following that?
Yeah, I think those are all the things we need to explore, and I think we need to understand as a department what we want to own as probably a quality assurance level, and what we want to have to have sign off on and assurances of the credentialing. So that is the conversations I want to have. I want to bring in the, the team at DSS that does other provider credentialing for Medicaid services, and really explore an opportunity that can definitely serve our members in the best way possible, and allow us to build a workforce to serve these individuals, because as we know, workforce in, in home and community-based services is always very tight, and then adding in additional layers of complexity for minimum qualifications that narrows your pool of, of who can apply.
Okay. Well, I look forward to hearing back from all of you and appreciate that answer, and I also, if you can get all of us an idea, I'm sure, I'm not the only one who's interested in knowing how many people are on the waitlist. That would be very helpful.
Sure.
It's, it's a little alarming to me if you're telling me that there's applications that are from two thousand nineteen, and we are not, we have not provided services for those people. So, thank you so much.
Sure.
Representative Walker, followed by Representative McCarty.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to, I was going to ask about the credentialing. Were there any other issues that the providers had brought to you besides credentialing and wave, or wages? I think, I think wages was one of the other issues.
Yeah, I think wages globally are brought to us across most of our HCBS providers. Offhand, I don't, I don't, those were the two that stood out. I'm sure once I get in the room with them, there's going to be some other areas that are going to be raised, but those were the two specific ones that were raised.
All right, thank you, and, and I also want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Two thousand nineteen, that's a long time to be on a waitlist, and that says that we need to, we need to look at what are we able to provide and trying to expand it, because our purposes are to provide services to people out in the community. And if somebody's waiting for me since two thousand nineteen, I would question whether they're still on the waitlist. So, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Representative McCarty?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I'm over here. Hello, good morning. Thank you for being here and for your presentation. I would just like to say that I also echo the concerns that I've heard. You know, I've been hearing from some of the providers, and I think it's really crucial that the agency hear from the provider. So first, my first question would be, have you reached out to the providers and how did you do that, and do the clients of the ABI waivers, do they receive a list of the actual providers? For first, to begin with.
Okay, so you want me, I'll answer that question first. So when an ABI waiver participant is met with one of our access agency care managers, they, they're first found functionally eligible, we develop a care plan, and then they are provided a list of the providers that serve their community. So we have lists broken down by catchment areas. So they can, they can call them, they can interview them. A lot of times with this community, they kind of have an idea of who they want to bring in, and they may be asked to meet with a specific provider agency. So we do have provider directories that can be shared as you're coming onto services, and also as they're interested, they can, they have the choice to change providers at any time. So they can, they may have met with another provider or asked for the registry at any point in their care plan to change providers. So that is made available to them. The first part of your question, I'm sorry, could you repeat the first part?
Yeah, that was it, to, to find out how the consumers were actually hearing about the various providers lists. And I also would like to go back to one of the comments that you made that we're delaying some, because I think it's important that we all understand exactly what services, because I think this is all about getting those services to those individuals that need them. It should be person-centered, and that was, I believe, part of the initiative for the waivers, to be sure, and I have some concerns reading the various testimonies and what's going on, and I feel uncomfortable voting, even though we say right now there's not a change. I'd like to see a change, and I'd like to see that change so there's more transparency and accountability so that we can actually, as a, a, an assembly, see where those services are going. And I don't quite see that currently in the waiver, the way they're formulated right now. So I'm glad to hear that you will be reaching out to all of the providers, that they can come in and have their voices heard as we move forward, because it's one thing to have the waiver, excuse me for going on so much, but it's one thing to have the waiver and then not see if you're getting recommendations, how to make improvements to those waivers so that those individuals that need the services are actually receiving those. So I, I know there's been recommendations to look at CARF certification, and I'm a strong advocate for having that outside, that neutral look at certification so that we know that when, once you're certified, then every, it should help DSS, no cost to the taxpayer. And so I just want to put that on the record, that I do have some very serious concerns, but I'd like to, all of us to work together. I think we get the job done when we're all there working as a unit. So, thank you for saying that the agency will be sitting down and that it will be a delay naturally. I, I don't think we can put an amendment now, but I would like to see that going forward, as long as you can assure us that that will happen.
Yeah, I think it's critical for the department to hear from the providers and, and our members, you know, these individuals are, you know, they're, they're in the hands-on staff, right? They're the ones day in and day out providing the services, and we owe that to our families and to the participants that are on the program, to hear from them and hear where their concerns are, where the pain points are, and what is within our power to control, right? I, I can't magically produce a workforce, but we can work on plans to have some sort of expansion to the services. I, you know, I, anecdotally, I have, I was an ABI care manager back in the day. I know these providers, I know these families. They, they are all very well-intentioned, and they are doing great work in the community for us. I want to be able to support them the best we can. So the, these sessions are going to be very productive working sessions. We're going to talk to our case managers about what families may want to come in and speak to us, and we're really going to just try to get a very well-balanced recommendation moving forward for the waiver and for everyone to be as successful as possible.
All set? Representative Nuccio, followed by Senator Lesser?
So, I want to dig in a little bit deeper on a question that was asked. So from what I understand, you know, these waivers, it's basically, you know, a, a federal waiver that we're doing. It, it helps offset the cost in that we have two hundred and eighty-four people that are currently receiving these services, and there's a waitlist going back to two thousand nineteen. I was wondering if you could give us a little color detail on why the waitlist is there? Is it simply staffing, or is there more to it? So, because I, I'm also equally concerned. I don't want to lower the standards of the care that these people are receiving, just so we can get more people there, because then they're not getting adequate care for what they need. So I, I really want to understand why do we have such a big waitlist, and what you think we could do to lessen that?
Okay, so I will answer part of that, and then I think, I don't want to speak out of turn on the, the fiscal side of DSS, because the, the waiver waitlist is a construct of the Medicaid budget, right? So these services are costly, and it is ongoing costs to the, to the Medicaid agency. So we've, have a waitlist to kind of control the costs, and we can get those numbers for you, but that would be something for our fiscal team to answer. But this is just a construct of how the HCBS waiver programs are set up. Nearly all of them have some level of a waitlist and a restriction on services. What we're waiving is the statewideness and the availability to all Medicaid members. That's what in nineteen fifteen C is, is one of the things that we waive in Connecticut. So, the waitlist-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can you say that again? I, I don't quite understand what you mean by that.
So the nineteen fifteen C waivers, you know, because it's a Medicaid service, but it's a HCBS nineteen fifteen C waiver service, which allows us to restrict the access and have a, a, a waitlist and a cap on how many people are accessing the services. So we have, that's a Medicaid budget construct. So we would need to talk to fiscal and our, and our DFS team to find out the history behind that, where the numbers were set, and that's not in my purview.
Do you have a second question, Representative Nuccio?
I think my second question is for you and Tony then. So is this something that we would then want to kind of look at to see if there's room for expansion in the Medicaid budget to allow more people off of the waitlist? And I guess the second half of that is, though, I don't think I heard, do we have the staff if we were to do that?
One, we don't have the staff. Two,
Right.
It's not our fiscal that she was talking about. It is DSS's fiscal, and this is not the only waiver that has a waitlist on it. And so while we're talking about this one today, it is not the only one that's out there, and we have work that is happening relative to the Medicaid budget that is in part being driven by the cost, and in part being driven by rates, and in part being driven by a number of different committees that are looking at the Medicaid budget, so.
So I get all that. I guess my concern is, Madam Chair, you know, being in a lot of these meetings and that, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't recall most of the other ones. I know that they all have waiting lists, but I don't recall hearing that we have one with a waiting list that goes back to two thousand nineteen.
I don't think that's been asked, so I don't know that-
Oh, so, well, that's fair. That's fair. That's probably why, if it's there, I hadn't heard it. So, okay, all right. I think that, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Lesser, I'm going to go to Representative Dayton for the first time, if you don't mind.
No problem.
Representative Dayton?
Thank you, Senator Austin. Nice to see you today. Thank you, DSS. You know, I was reading through the kind of cover letter here, and we talk about the changes in the sort of skillset for the case managers and everything. And I know that this is one of our biggest limitations that we have on other waiver programs for folks in the IDD community. I'm wondering, is DSS working with our Community College, our Office of Workforce Strategy, and our other sort of higher education organizations in our state to ensure that we can get these skills out there to, to fulfill and reduce our waitlist?
Sure. So, and let me just provide some context, because that was something I didn't mention. The original notice of intent for this waiver renewal included department-raised language to reduce the case manager minimum qualifications, which was a licensure, like to be a licensed social worker or a registered nurse to perform the case management part, which is an administrative contractual service under the waiver, not tied to our providers or tied to our, our access agency contracted staff. We also pulled that language from this renewal to reevaluate that as well, to make sure that that was the right course of action. So that is very dependent on, again, rates. So when you ask to bring in a case manager that is licensed, that elevates the salary of the individual, and the reimbursement that we were providing for the administrative case management services to the access agencies wasn't supporting that level of licensure. It's been very hard for them to maintain staff and find staff, where we have supervisors carrying caseloads. So that was department-raised language in the notice of intent, but we've rescinded that, and that is not going through in this renewal. That would be something that will be evaluated during the working sessions with the families, the providers, and the advocates.
Thank you for that, but I'm really talking about sort of workforce and how DSS is working to ensure that we can get this workforce out there to support these folks on this waiting list, as well as other waiting lists. It is a huge priority, and it's really tragic that we have families that have been on the waitlist for five-plus years. I know on the IDD list, the DDS and DSS waiting list for autism, the waitlists are really long, and one of the key drivers is not just the sort of Medicaid rates, it really is the workforce. And I get concerned when we start changing language in regards to case managers and, and other language that we are building it up so that that waitlist is going to grow because we have a lack of talent. So we really need to, to focus on that. I'm going to stop talking about this, because I am talking to the Office of Workforce Strategy, but it is something that is connected deeply with this waiver. So thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, DSS.
Representative Nolan, for the first time?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm just wondering if we have a estimate in regards to what it would cost if we did not have those people on a waiting list? Do we know what the approximate amount would be? Also, is there a minimum and a maximum amount that you could provide in regards to people that are on waivers? And the last time that we added people, how many did we add that came from the waitlist? And if you don't have that, if you can send it to the Madam Administrator, so she can give it to us, please. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Of course. We'll pull together the information, kind of the historical, the last time slots were added, how much it would cost to clear the existing waitlist, and, and get you those numbers. We'll, we'll pull that all together for a comprehensive waitlist report for you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Senator Lesser?
I thank you, Madam Chair, just echoing some of the comments we heard before. You, you are absolutely right. There are lots of other waitlists. Unfortunately, two thousand nineteen is not necessarily the longest I've heard, and that is a, you know, concerning across all sorts of programs where there are people who are deserving of services waiting in line, thinking right now, for example, with the Katie Beckett waiver, and I know there's a working group right now that's looking at ending that waitlist, but it is also about five, six years, which is very discouraging for sick kids. Just a question, since, you know, I know we're waiting on that, that information from DSS. I just figured I would check to see if OFA is in the room to see if they have information right now about the, the length of the ABI two waitlist.
OFA said they don't have that, that information.
I thought it was worth a shot. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I asked. They're shaking their head no. All set? Senator?
I am all set.
Representative Cook? Can you get off of mute, ma'am? You're trying?
Hello, sorry, thank you.
There you are.
I'm, and thank you, Madam Chairman, and great to see everybody, and thank you for the information. I do have a question regarding, regarding the timing of hire. Do you know how many positions that we have open at this time, and how long it takes to fill one position?
Is that, is, um, for, for clarification, Representative, is that in DSS, or is that in the advocates relative to working with people who are on the ABI waiver?
Relevant to people working on the waiver. And for people that are able to, yes, and those caregivers. So yes, Madam Chair.
Yeah, so I apologize. I can't answer the question on provider kind of length of time for hire or what their workforce looks like specifically. Cannot answer that.
So there's, just to follow up with that, when you put forth an application, do we know how long that takes for that application to be approved and then for hire?
They don't, I think that there's a misconception. The advocates and the providers that work with this group are not state employees. They work for a nonprofit agency. So they don't have access to that information and they don't put forth the application. But unless you're talking about the job that the speaker had before, which was an ABI waiver case management at the state level, is that the job you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's for you.
So there is no longer ABI case managers at the Department of Social Services. So that is now contracted out with our access agency staff. And it's an administrative service that our access agencies, they do the functional assessment. They support the individual and care plan development and then lead multidisciplinary teams throughout the care plan. So that is done through the access agencies. So if we're talking about the length of time to hire there, that varies because of, again, the minimum qualifications and the threshold of trying to hire with the reimbursement rates. So that's what we're hearing from our contracted access agencies. And right now, there's three case management agencies for the acquired brain injury. And then there is a wealth of providers that then provide the services that are in the care plan. And I cannot speak to how long it takes them to onboard a care, to fully staff a care plan. That's very unique to probably the area of the state, the types of services and that agency's capacity and who they have at the ready.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Seminar for the second time.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, for your indulgent of a second time. Just a quick question, one other question that arose in my head as we were talking. When people are put on the waiver, we're talking about there is a restricted amount of people who can be put on the waiver. How many people get off of the waiver on an annual basis? And that would free up slots for other people to be put onto the waiver. But I'm just wondering, my assumption would be that once somebody is put on the waiver, they're probably on the waiver for a significant length of time. Is there anything about the waiver that disqualifies someone at some point in time? Maybe their age. I know with Katie Beckett, it's definitely age. I'm just wondering if this waiver has a similar restrictions or not.
No. So this waiver typically, when you're on, and given the length of time it takes to get on, people don't really give up their waiver spot. So we would lose through natural reasons, death, people moving out of state, people no longer maintaining their Medicaid eligibility because this is a Medicaid program. There are individuals that elect to leave the program or may move into another type of service. They may decide to go into one of our state plan programs. There are very few people that roll off. So it's really just building in piecemeal at a few at a time each year as just natural attrition of the waiver.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So there are really limited amount of slots that become available per year.
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
And we don't want people to pass away to make more slots available. All right, that's it for this section of the Acquired Brain Injury Waiver Two. Oh, I'm sorry, Representative McCarty for the second time.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And just very quickly, we talked a little bit about the provider list for the services. Are those lists public?
It's not that you can't, you can't like go online and find them, but we can make them available to family members or anyone that's interested in seeing them. We don't have them publicly on a website.
And would that be a possibility?
So I think possibly, yes. I would have to look into that with kind of our legal department and our provider credentialing team and what that looks like.
All right. Thank you very much.
All righty. Anybody else? Seeing no one else at this moment, we're going to move on to Fiscal Year 25 Community Services Block Grant Allocation Plan. Switch seats. If you'd just introduce yourself and go ahead and start.
So good morning, everyone. My name is Cassandra Norfleet Johnson and I'm a Program Manager for the Department of Social Services. And I am your today's subject matter expert on CSBG, Community Services Block Grant. The department has submitted testimony for the record. So we will not be specifically reading that level of testimony, but we will be going through a slide deck. So why don't we get started with the slide deck? Next slide, please. So the first part in what we're sharing for everyone is just a general overview of the Community Services Block Grant. And it is administered by the DSS. We are here, Connecticut, the principal state agency here. And we have nine community action agencies here in the state of Connecticut with their own specific geographic service areas. And they cover all 169 towns in Connecticut. Next slide, please. What we have here is next is the services that's offered through CSBG. And what the information really around CSBG is about is looking at working with, providing support services and activities to individuals and families with low income that alleviate the causes and conditions of poverty within the community. And when we look at low income, we're talking about households at or below 125% of the federal poverty level. Services that are provided by the Community Action Agency are case management, early childhood programs, employment and training, energy assistance and weatherization, financial education, food and nutrition services and housing. So they offer a large cadre of services for these vulnerable populations. Next slide. And we give you here tied to the income eligibility, just some little information. So you're wondering to yourselves, what is that income level at 125% of the FPL? In Connecticut, for a family of four, it would be $39,000. The Connecticut CAAs as well as nationally, they offer a lot of services and strategies. And with that information, when we look at services and strategies, we're talking about, again, employment, education and cognitive skills, income, infrastructure, asset building and a host of other things. What we're excited about in the network is really our performance management work and the work that the CA network does to ensure that quality services are delivered to customers as well as community members. Next slide. This slide is about the funding levels, if you will. We are making an assumption because we do not have our federal fiscal year 2025 funding level. So we're going to make an assumption that we're going to be funded at the 2024 level. With that, it is about $9.1 million. We also tied to that-
Go ahead.
All right. The community action agencies receive 90% of that actual block grant. That 90% represents about $8.2 million. There is also, when you're looking at that, we have a 5% for the administration of the agency as well as 5% for discretionary. What's really important here, and we want to take a moment here and we can deal with this later. We want to talk about the fact that this level of allocation of that 90% is representative of an allocation that was presented before this legislature to reflect a change in formula. The CSBG formula in the past was actually calculated from 1996 poverty data. Connecticut was monitored by the federal government and they said you need to look at this allocation and look at current poverty data. The department worked with the CA network. We came up with a formula and a methodology driven by the population at or below 125% of the FPL. Last year, there were changes in that poverty level, I mean, in the methodology. And you will see that continuing in this year. So we look at what we have for our plan for this year. The plan for this year, 2025, is $10.3 million. And that includes carry forward dollars of $1.1 million. When we're talking about that carry forward and what that looks like, we're also including COLA information as well as a one-time increase. And we're using the carry forward dollars to absorb that cost. Next slide, please. This is just a simple infographic, if you will, because who doesn't like a pie chart? You know what I mean? And we're just giving you a little infographic of what that looks like. So you can see the bulk of those resources coming into Connecticut are out and shared with the Community Action Agency to ensure that they have resources to serve Connecticut's vulnerable populations. Next slide. Again, another different kind of infographic, because we love pictures and charts, showing you something that's also in the actual allocation plan, but we're giving you a different look. So we're showing you what the grants are to the eligible entities, AKA the CAAs. We're again showing you what we have for discretionary as well as administration. So just another way of looking at the data that's previously shared, but now we have it in a chart. Next slide. This is a pie chart, if you will. And now you can see what each agency's share looks like based upon the information and their individual allocations. There is a chart again in the allocation plan. This is just a pie chart. It just gives you an idea of what each agency is actually receiving from this visual. Next slide. So this slide, and it's showing you the CSBG funding summary from 2024 and 2025. And when you look at this chart, you're going to see three little asterisks tied to Alliance for Community Empowerment, Community Action Agency of New Haven and Community Renewal Team. Those asterisks are really identifying the fact that in the agreed-upon allocation formula, those three agencies received a one-time increase in 2024 to assist with a transition, if you will, a guide path, if you will, so that they could slowly adjust to their new normal based upon the approved allocation plan that was shared with HHS and approved by HHS. So in 2024, we gave them that path, that one-time adjustment that we put in the plan for 2024. And in 2025, we're just reflecting the fact that those three agencies are not receiving that one-time funding in 2025. Next slide, please. This is something that we are excited about in DSS. And this is around the information tied to the Center of Excellence, the CSBG organizational standards. Every CAA in Connecticut and nationally are annually reviewed by 58 organizational standards. And it's looking at their level of service delivery, their board governance, their financial institutions, HR and everything else. And so what we've decided to encourage tied to this work is if indeed you score between 90% and 100, we actually identify a performance incentive that the agencies take back and bring back. And within their agency, they provide celebrations for their staff. They once again are saying to their staff, "Great work and thank you for that." So if indeed you score at 100%, $7,500. If you score between 99 and 95, it's $5,000. If you score between 94 and 90, it's $2,500. And again, this is the level of work that the CAAs are doing. And we are excited about their commitment to quality service. Next slide. I am now available for-
Okay, if you want to take the slide deck down. So I'm going to start off with a couple of questions. And in the plan that we have in front of us, there is only one community action agency that is losing money. And that's the city of New Haven. And so I've been doing a lot of work over the summer to look at our populations and looking at this complicated formula that is not just about the formula that you're using, but the pieces that contribute to that formula have to do with poverty in an area, have to do with income wealth in an area. And so I asked a couple of questions of the Office of Fiscal Analysis and I'm working with them on, I was looking at Norwich, my largest community. And I was paying attention to it because we had a significant shift between commercial property and residential property, raising income taxes or property taxes for those people by 60% in some cases because we were switching and finding that residential property was much more valuable. And we were seeing an increase in property values on the residential side, but a leveling off of property value on commercial side. And I've also noticed that we have had a significant increase in population in some of our communities. Not so much on the eastern part of the state, but in New Haven. And I've noticed that the people moving into New Haven have an income higher than the people who have lived there forever, for decades. And I'm concerned that when we're looking at all of these formulas, that we're going to start decreasing funds necessary for communities that have not seen a decrease in poverty of the number of people that are in poverty in that particular community. But we have seen an increase in wealth by the number of people that are there. But that does not help out that core group of people who have lived there. And we are making decisions to decrease the amount in some communities because we're saying wealth is increasing in those communities. Well, wealth is increasing, but not for the people that need the services. And the people that need the services in sheer numbers, not in percentages, but in sheer numbers, are the same numbers that were there before. And so I'm really starting to get concerned. And that was my concern when I asked the Office of Fiscal Analysis to look at what was happening when we were changing from commercial to residential. And people can say, Kathy, none of these are connected to each other, but I think they are. And I think they are because this isn't the first time we've seen a decrease in New Haven. And, you know, we're not really paying attention. We had a town that received money from the state because they ostensibly needed money, but they had a $30 million surplus in their budget this one year. So I really think that we need to start paying attention to how we're doing this. And if we're not, our formulas are not addressing this issue. I think we need to step back and make sure that we are recognizing that we are directly taking money from the services needed by people who are not seeing an increase in their income. And I'm worried that we're going to say that we don't see a value in helping those who are not seeing an increase in their bottom dollar. So I wanted to sort of bring that up. And, you know, I think that we really need to pay attention to the formulas that are deciding these dollars for communities. So this is a big concern of mine. I don't plan on not vote, to be very clear, I don't plan on not voting on this today. I plan on supporting this application today. But I am going to, if necessary, call for a public hearing on how we're formulating these grants and these waivers because I think we have to delve down into the numbers and pay attention to this because I'm very worried that it's not going to get to the people that really need it. And I wanted to make sure that, you know, I listened yesterday to the conversation that was happening in the briefing. I'm very worried that this is the beginning of us seeing decreases in funds for people that need the assistance. And the ability to provide that assistance is directly coming about through no change in the number of people that need the services. Now, I personally would like to see a lesser number of people needing the services. But when we're not seeing that happen and we're decreasing the amount, then I think that we have to start- I, I think that we have to start reevaluating how we're doing it. So I just wanted to let you know that it's something that I'm considering us doing maybe late November or December, in particular, if we're going to continue to see decreases in funding for communities that I think still need the funding. So I, I see a number of hands up. Representative Walker?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Madam Chair, for your concerns and your questions. I think these are some of the questions and concerns that we, as you said, we started yesterday in, in our, our brief discussion. I also have expressed my concerns about how we are reviewing the needs of the cities and what are we using? Are we using increased populations to offset the, the, the vision of what is the need? But in, in, in this, you mentioned a formula that I'd like to know more details about what is in the formula that you use that has caused this change in the, the belief that the, the number of people in Connecticut, I mean, in New Haven are, have been, has been reduced. So therefore, the reduction in the money that they're going to be receiving is justified.
Sure, I can definitely answer that question. So the formula was actually initially, initially based upon data provided by the CAA network. As we started the negotiation with the CAA network and said, provide us with a formula, a couple of options based upon current poverty data. They did indeed provide us with that data. What we noticed, however, in this formula is that it was not weighted at a population at one hundred and twenty-five percent or below of poverty within the complete catchment area. So we are not just looking at one town or another, looking at the complete CAA catchment area tied to those persons in poverty. And so what we've noticed is we were looking at the data that there were more people in poverty in the eastern part of the state, up in the New London area, the Norwich area, the Danielson area, the Willimantic area. So when you were looking at current poverty data and you weren't looking at the population at or below one hundred and twenty-five percent from nineteen ninety-six, there was a change. And because there was a change and there was a larger need in this area, we had to make adjustment. We looked at that level of detail to drive it. We also looked at what the agencies looked like and what the community looked like. But again, these resources are for households at or below one hundred and twenty-five percent of the, of income. So we did not look at the total person, population count. We were looking at that because again, that's not who these services are targeted for. So that's what drove this, this formula. We can again, share the information that we shared last year with this body. We'll make sure we get that to you. But Rep Walker, that's what drove this kind of conversation because there was a change in population. And if there's a larger need in another area, what we wanted to make sure is that area had the resources to be able to address that need and that change. We also provided.
Okay. So, so let me ask you a question. In, in these discussions, did you discuss this with the community action agencies when you came up with this, this, this epiphany or whatever?
So we were required by the federal government to make this change.
No, 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 no. Did you discuss it with the agents, the CAA agencies?
Yes, we did, ma'am. We presented it to the CAAs. We were in a meeting. We discussed this information with the complete CAA Executive Director Board, the CAFKA Board, when we had this conversation. Yes, we did present this information to the CAFKA Board. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, in, 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 in the discussion, did you identify the fact that you had been using or, or, or the, the, the numbers that you were using were numbers that were reflective of back in nineteen ninety-six numbers? And that by going forward with the requirements by the feds, that you felt that the community action agencies on the East Coast had been underfunded? Did you explain that to them?
So I'm not sure if we can say they were underfunded or not. What I'm saying is that our allocation and as we allocated the resources itself for Connecticut was based upon a nineteen ninety-six formula that the network itself and the department, I wasn't around back in nineteen ninety-six. So I don't remember all of the institutional information tied to it. But that was the formula that we would present each year to this body, and it was based upon nineteen ninety-six population data. And so we had to change that. And so, yes, they were aware. And in our charts that we showed them, we said, this is what it looked like from the formula in twenty twenty-three, still using nineteen ninety-six poverty data. This is what it looked like in twenty twenty-four, and we were able to show what that change looked like. Yes, we presented that to the CAA Network, ma'am.
Okay. Can we have a copy of this formula that you guys are using to make these changes? And what, what of the community action agencies that, with the distributions that you gave us now, which ones got increases in your formula? What's your formula?
So most of the CAAs in the formula itself received a increase and three received a decrease. And the three that received a decrease, because that would be easier for me to say, would be Alliance, Community Renewal Team and Community Action Agency of New Haven.
So I, I, I think that if you wouldn't mind, Madam Administrator, could you put up the slide deck again and go to that slide? Because I don't think that it shows those three as having a decrease. I think only one Community Action Agency gets a decrease. And then I'm going to have Representative Walker come back for a second time so I can get to some people for the first time.
I apologize, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. And I, I, I know two, two, two rules, but this, this is an ongoing discussion that we've been having for quite some time, especially with New Haven. And I, I've, I've, I've hit my, my wall. So just thank you, Madam. I would appreciate. No, I don't think, it's, it's not in that deck. It's in the OFA. It's in the OFA.
There it is. Yeah, this is the one I'm talking about. So just so that everybody's talking the same language. The Access Agency Incorporated, I believe, is Bridgeport. That went up a little bit. The Alliance for Community Empowerment ACE went up four thousand, less than four thousand dollars. So it didn't go down. The Community Action Agency of New Haven went down about eighty thousand dollars, eighty thousand and change. The Western Connecticut went up a tiny bit. The Greater Hartford went up, and that's also starred. The New Britain went up. New Opportunities went up. Team Incorporated went up and TBCCA went up. But none of them went up. That eighty thousand that came out of New Haven was essentially split between the other eight. Does that be accurate or? Because it seems that the number at the bottom and then the administration and the discretionary programs stay the same. So the total.
So I, I think maybe the OFA chart, maybe I can find it.
I got it right here.
Really shows a different view, if you will, because what's creating the noise, if you will, in the twenty twenty-five RV COLA dollars and that one-time twenty twenty-five resource for the private providers. And so that's what's offsetting that change for Alliance and CRT.
So when I'm looking at the OFA allocation plan that is done by OFA on page one.
Correct.
It shows an increase in one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and a decrease in one.
Right, so if you look on the second page of the OFA chart tied to the proposed changes, table two, it shows the base. And what I'm saying is, is that the one-time FY twenty-five, those one-time dollars is absorbing that change that would have been for the CRT for the one-time monies as well as Alliance. And that's why CAA New Haven's increase or decrease, if you will, appears to be larger and being impacted because of the one-time dollars.
Yeah, I.
Let's go to the next person. We'll, we'll come back.
We'll go to the next person, but I don't think that the one-time dollars are really at question. I think it's the basic formula that changes and shows an increase in eight and a decrease in one.
No, the, the base formula tied to that piece of it, and I think that's where we'll have to get at. The base formula from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four shows a decrease in three or should show a decrease in three. So we will get that information for everyone to show that.
Doesn't show it on our numbers.
Right, because of that one-time dollar tied to that piece of it, that's what.
We try not to count one-time dollars ever.
Well, I know, it's like a gift card.
We, we don't try to count one-time dollars ever. We get very frustrated when people count one-time dollars. We're not counting the one-time dollars.
Yeah, so, so we will get and we'll get it charted out to you so you can see what the original formula looked like from twenty twenty-three, what the formula looked like for twenty twenty-four, and then you can see what those three numbers were.
Okay, Representative Dylan, followed by Representative Nuccio.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and good morning. Thank you for being here. I, I just want to thank the Senator for raising the issue in the way that she did because it sounds very much like the difficulty we had in the past year with the environmental justice communities, where I was assured that we had objective formulas, but it wasn't really clear that we could unpack them and, and what they did. What I understood, and I could be wrong, but nobody could explain it, would be, for example, if there was a new high-rise built on the east side around Yale that had maybe studios that was attracting a very young, exciting, talented, high-income group of people to work in biotech, that that would throw up your formula because it helped your grand list or your overall wealth. But of course, on the other side where we live, the poverty remains and, and in fact, the cost of living has gone up. So that I, I can't stress, I, it was my intention coming here today to vote no. And, and I'll, because I, I felt I could not explain it to the people who trust me. And, and if I can get a coherent explanation for why New Haven is losing money, maybe I'll hinge my mind by the, by the time of the vote. But I, I really think these formulas need to be analyzed. There, there are differences between Eastern Connecticut and some of the big cities. But within the big cities, there are differences within the cities. And there's, there's variation. And so that there's nothing, these, these formulas were not written on Mount Sinai. They were written by human beings and their assumptions have to be examined and maybe the facts have changed. So thank you very much.
So thank you, Rep Dylan. I think the one thing that I'd like to point out to you is that we look at poverty data, one hundred and twenty-five percent of the FPL. So if indeed these other residents, if you will, that are moving in New Haven and their income exceed one hundred and twenty-five percent of the FPL, they would not be factored into and would not impact this formula because their income most likely would exceed that federal formula.
I, I think Representative Dylan, did you have another comment? I'm sorry.
Well, I, I don't feel that, I don't feel comfortable making a claim about some of this. I, I used to hypothetical about a high-rise because it was presented to me by others when we were trying to figure out how many even got kicked off the distressed municipalities. So we kind of kicked that issue down the road, but the underlying problem with the formula remains. And so here we are again, and, and I understand what you're saying. I need to have a coherent, credible sentence to give to the people of the city who rely on the Community Action Agency for services to explain why they're being cut and why they should feel comfortable with state government.
Thank you. All set? Up next is Representative Nuccio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is all very interesting conversation. I just want to clear up a couple of things that I heard. I'm totally fine. If we were using poverty data from nineteen ninety-six, that's, we should be updating that, right? I wholeheartedly agree that we should be not looking at stagnant poverty data from, how many years is that? Seven, eight years? That's a lot of years, a lot of years. My daughter was, well, she's thirty and she was born in nineteen ninety-four, so twenty-eight years worth of data that we should be looking at. My question was something that you just mentioned. Are we saying that you're only looking at the population that is still at the hundred and twenty-five percent of the FPL? So regardless of the rest of the population changing from an income perspective, you're only looking at the number of people that are specifically at a hundred and twenty-five FPL or below? Can you confirm that?
Yes, when we're looking at population data for CSVG, because that's the, the. All right, so, all right, thank you. So in essence, yes, when we're talking about income eligibility, I think maybe that's the word we should be thinking about, income eligibility. It's for populations at or below one hundred and twenty-five percent. And that's why we saw this change, if you will. Poverty was moving out. There were changes in other areas. And again, we looked at fresh data and unfortunately, things happened.
So you're, you're still looking at the populace of the people who are under that. What you're saying is you've just seen improvements in certain areas and worsening of other areas from nineteen ninety-six to twenty twenty-four. Correct?
Yes, or people, people are moving out. People are changing. People aren't always just in a city. People are moving in other locations. There have been change in industry and those kinds of things. Populations are being impacted and we see that level of poverty across all areas now.
So that's, that's kind of something that I want to talk about because, you know, I have an area. Again, I, I totally agree with the chairs on looking at the formula here and making sure the formula is doing the right thing. But, you know, I don't represent a city. I represent small towns and I have a small town in, in New, in the northeast corner that has just about fourteen percent poverty. And when I look at the money that my CAA is getting, you know, I'm always questioning how much of it is going to my town that has some of the highest poverty rates in the northeast area. And we don't get a lot of money. We don't, we don't get a lot of support from these agencies. And I find that very troublesome because I'm in an area that has Willimantic. Well, Willimantic gets a lot of, a lot of the support from the CAAs and the small town of Wellington doesn't. So I think if we're going to look at this formula, we have to look at it holistically and not with just a focus on what's happening in the cities where there's a loss of money. But how are we funding the people who need this across the state? And I, I understand people have moved, right? And, and again, I, there's no reason we should be using data from nineteen ninety-six. That's far too old. So I'm happy to look at that. And I think we have to, as has been mentioned, not look at it in context of net grand list. For whatever reason, the state just loves to look at towns based off of their net grand list, which does not account for the people who are at the lower level of the spectrum or even the people who are in the middle of the spectrum. So I'm, I'm fine looking at the formula, but I want to look at it holistically and what it means for the small towns. And how do we ensure that the small towns who have higher levels of poverty are actually seeing the dollars that are getting sent there and that it's not just being sent on the larger populations in that same CAA area? So again, totally fine with changing the data. I understand the move in parts of a hundred and twenty-five percent FPL and that we're not looking at the rich people moving in and saying it's less poverty. We're actually looking at the people who are at a hundred and twenty-five FPL and lower. But I think if we look at this, it has to be holistically with ensuring that the dollars actually get to the communities that have the poverty and not just the bigger populated areas within those. That have the poverty and not just the bigger populated areas within those. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, Senator Lesser, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first, there's a question about how poverty is calculated. Uh. Is this before or after transfer payments?
So the poverty is calculated based upon the US Census data. And that's the information we use to, uh, look at the data. The CAAs provided us with that information from the. Uh, CT data, and from there, we took their data. Because we wanted to make sure it was first something that they vetted and felt comfortable with that poverty data, and we use that to then look at a formula. To look at what is the agency, what is the community, and what's going on with the persons in poverty. So again, it's census data, trusted information.
So, so I, I'm not, I'm not questioning the accuracy of the data. I guess what I'm asking specifically is about transfer payments. So. Uh, we, you know, on both state and federal level, for example, we provide an EITC. Uh, to low-income working individuals to provide a boost in their income. And so my question is in calculating. You know, one of the questions in measuring poverty is, is it before or after transfer payments, you know, like the EITC? Do you know?
No, no, those factors are not, uh, considered as we look at this. We are looking solely at the poverty level based upon the gross income that is actually reported.
So you're not looking at transfer payments?
Uh, no, 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 no. We look at, again, when you look at the, um, Amer- American Community Survey Index and that level of data that comes out. Comes right out of the census information, and we use that to clearly only look at it. We don't look at anything else. Because again, each person has their own need. Each household is slightly different, and so we're only looking at that level of poverty data.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, and I'm not accusing DSS of fudging data or doing its own analysis. I'm just asking. And I, and maybe this is a question about how the census reports that data, and, and maybe if, if you don't know, maybe, oh, if A does. Does that data, is that? Before or after transfer payments?
Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind, I, I just want to acknowledge that we recognize the concerns. And it's clearly important that we continue to work with this body to understand and bring transparency to our formulas. So that is something that we are dedicated to looking at, bringing back, and making sure that we're working on a resolution together. I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't have all the information and data to share, but we do share your concerns. We understand them.
Um, thank you. I do think that Senator Lesser's question has, um, value. He just wants to know. Are you calculating in the FPL calculation, uh, any change in the person's, uh. Income level, um, uh, based on whatever benefits they may receive, like if they get EITC. Do you then relook at their income level? That's what we're, that's what he is asking. I think that we're going into the weeds, and so. You, I don't think you understood what he was asking. Is that clear? Is that correct, Senator Lesser?
That is correct.
Got it. So we will circle back, um, and look at that data, but I do not believe we're factoring into all of that level of data. We will go in and look at the. Uh, backup documentation to support the information from the ACI.
And I think that Senator Lesser would like you to look at that formula and see if that's being included into the calculation. Any benefits that the person may receive. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. No, no, unfortunately, I'm not, said I got a, I got a couple more questions. I'll be quick though. Um, too, I understand the concerns to the communities that are being affected by the, uh, um, proposed cut. Um, DSS does, uh, has said that there is a transition payment plan that's happening, uh, that's already in place to try to lessen the impact. Uh, how was that calculated? What is the size of that? How are we paying for that?
So I, I think I heard you correctly, so I'm going to try to restate this, and then you can tell me if I was. If I misheard you. I think you asked me that if indeed there was a transition plan. And if indeed there was a transition plan, how was it calculated? Is that correct?
Right.
Correct. So the transition plan was provided for twenty twenty-four. And it was added in to make sure that whatever dollar amounts were reduced from twenty-three into twenty-four. We provided those resources in twenty-four. We executed contracts that said, this is a one-time increase. We created budgets that said. This is a one-time increase, and we issued payments that said this was a one-time increase. So for twenty twenty-four, that's how that information was laid out with the. Belief that the CAA network would be taking that year, as this was a path to transition. To be ready to provide services in twenty twenty-five based upon that change, because. Meaning action agencies, if nothing, have administrative capacities to be able, to be able to operationalize services. And that's what they do really, really well. They plan and they execute.
That, that calculation, um, of one-time funding is on page two of the OFA analysis. Or the people that are listening.
And, and that's being paid forward with carryforward funds?
Yes.
So why, just, that leads me to my third and hopefully final question, Madam Chair. Um, why do we have carryforward funds? It, it seems to go back several years, and I'm just curious why there are carryforward funds in this program.
Correct. So part of the reason why there were carryforward funds were tied to sometimes how things are actually calculated. So I'm going to try not to go too much into the weeds of a budget or anything else. But what happens is when we're reporting the information, it's based upon the close of the, um, federal fiscal year. Sometimes a cost might be obligated, but a payment may not be actually issued out to an entity. Until the actual documentation is. So when we're looking at how we're reporting it, we've obligated those costs, but we have not expended those costs. The other part of this carryforward that you've seen for over and over years have just existed because, and this is a historical perspective. When the federal budget is not passed as of October one, that. Carryforward is available to provide the October payments to those CAAs. So they don't have the stress and the disease of how are we going to pay our staff with no resources while we're waiting for a federal budget to be passed. I hope I answered your question.
So does that, does that mean that this plan that's before us also has a built-in carryforward that we're expecting? And what's the, if that's the case, what's the size of the carryforward?
So there is a carryforward. It's in the plan. Hold on for one moment. And I will. So the carryforward in the plan that we're planning on spending is one point one million dollars. It brings our total up to ten point three. So our block grant is nine point one. Our proposed carryforward into this year that we're going to be spending money is one point eight. Our total plan to expend monies for twenty twenty-five is ten point three.
And so at this point, we'll find out next year what you plan to do with it, to carryforward funds from this year?
Yes.
Okay, um.
Senator Lesser, I'm, I'm already gone to four or five questions. Can I get on to other people for the one?
Sure, I, I just, it just, I just heard though from staff that, uh, they believe that the census figures don't include. Uh, calculations for transfer payments. If there's a way in the getting the information to these committees. Uh, that DSS could, could simulate what accounting for transfer payments might look like, that would be helpful. Um, if we're lifting people out of poverty, we should, we should show that, um, and, uh, you know, adjust things accordingly to better target our scarce resources. Thank you.
Uh, Representative Johnson?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your, uh, analysis when you began the questioning on, uh, trying to work on. Uh, how we're analyzing the transition from the nineteen ninety-six poverty analysis to, uh, poverty analysis today and how we're. Uh, making sure that, uh, we're, uh, being more accurate, and I, uh, was kind of, uh. Feeling consistent with Representative Dylan's idea of not voting for this because I didn't understand what was going on. Uh, uh, ma- in the transition. It didn't seem like the formula analysis was, uh, completely provided, and I can see that. Uh, my feelings about this were similar, uh, to what yours were and also Representative Walker's. Uh, so I'm concerned about how we're looking at poverty, and I'm concerned that we're not addressing poverty all over the state of Connecticut. However, uh, when we take a look at poverty in the urban areas, the urban areas support the regions. And so when you have a area like Willimantic, we support everybody with the three homeless shelters. With more, uh, more public housing on a per capita basis than anywhere else in the region, and, uh, except for Hartford, and actually the state. And so we do a lot of things for people who are poor. Uh, we do not, uh, see that happening in the surrounding towns at all. So we are doing this work, and so to complain about us being focused on is, is, I think, a problem. Uh, the other thing is, just as a point of clarification, um. What is the, um, I thought access agency was for the northeast corner. Am I, uh, not correct? Because I think it was mentioned earlier that, that it was thought that it was for the Bridgeport area. I think access agency, to the best of my knowledge, is for northeast corner.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you say the last question again about?
Once Nowhere Access, the first line in there, where is that, uh, CAA from?
That's the eastern part of the state, Quiet Corner.
What's the Bridgeport?
Bridge, Bridgeport is Alliance.
Okay.
Okay, just wanted to be clear on that, and thank you, thank you for the clarification. And, um, I will, uh, leave the rest of my questions and thoughts about this, uh, to see what we hear. I'm not sure how I'm voting on this because. I don't like voting for something when I'm not clear on what the transition formulas are. And having the, the poorest district in the state, I'm very, very concerned. So I appreciate the commentary that we've heard so far in the analysis. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Representative McCarty?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I'll be very quick. Um, thank you for your presentation. Um, I, I just would like if you could go, you mentioned the discretionary programs in the plan. Could you just elaborate a little more how those are used, and, uh, it looks like it stays rather similar to the last plan?
Yes, so the discretionary monies are administered by the Department of Social Services. We provide training and technical assistance for the community action agencies. Uh, we send board members to training. We do capacity building. Um, all of these resources, the bulk of the resources are really specifically targeted to ensuring that community action agencies have. Um, capacity within their organizations to provide services to customers. One of the things, for example, that we're actually doing is that we're working with CT data. To provide training and technical assistance for the CAAs so they can build up their ability to do, uh, data mining. Data analysis, telling that story about community need and what that work is. One of the things that we're also doing for this year. Is also supporting for twenty twenty-five, when I say this year, is to support the CAA Network's. Uh, diaper demonstration project. They identified a gap in need tied to some of those, um, services and, um. Deliverables for those customers. So with these discretionary dollars, we're going to support. The federal demonstration, diaper demonstration pilot to ensure the CAA network will be successful in their work.
Uh, thank you for that explanation, and then if I may, uh, Madam Chair, just a shout out to the community action agencies. I say this. I know personally how hard they work, uh, in my area and how they really stretch every dollar. For efficiency, and you mentioned in your presentation the organizational standards. And I know they take them very seriously and are, uh, to assure that those dollars are getting where they need with all the surveys and everything that the. Agencies, uh, community action agencies do, but I do, I would also like to, uh, back my colleagues today that I think. It's a bigger problem. It's nothing that DSS or the Action Agency is federal dollars. We have to make the case for. Poverty, you know, the action, or trying to end poverty for over fifty years and. It, we, you get so far and then we're back to looking at it. So I think it's important that we keep reassessing the data. And trying to be sure that those individuals that really need those services are getting the services, but I know the community action agencies are. Working twenty-four seven around the day to get those services to the population. So. Thank you for your collaboration, and, uh, I look forward to continuing the work. Thank you.
Senator Semenara?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the advantage to going later is that the majority of your questions get asked by others, so. One of my questions was just asked about the transparency, uh, regarding the discretionary allocation. Um, so I'll let that one be, but I do, I did also want to, uh, verbalize my concern, um. That my colleagues have, uh, spoken of already regarding, um, looking at the formula and the services. I, of course, want everyone who is in need to get what, what they are deserved and, and what they need to. So the idea that we are using data from nineteen ninety-six is concerning again. Um, but I do want to stress, as my good colleague, um, said earlier, I represent the northwest corner. Um, there are people in need in the northwest corner as well, so. I too would like to see this looked at as in a holistic way so that, um. Everyone is getting the services that they need and not just focus being put on the city. So thank you so much.
Representative Nuccio?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you for the, the second time. I was listening to what Senator Lesser was saying, and, um. I'm not sure, but I think we actually agree. I, I just want to kind of clarify and see. So are we asking then, basic, don't chuckle? Oh, I see that.
I chuckle.
Um, not you, Kathy's chuckling.
But I also chuckle.
I, I didn't see, did you chuckle? All right, well, okay. So I just want to make sure, um. I understand what we're asking for, because I think it makes sense. I would like to also understand, are we looking at the extra programs that we're doing earned income tax, et cetera, et cetera? Um, when we're looking at the federal poverty level, and I, I think that's what he was asking. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's what he's asking.
Okay, perfect. I, I agree. I think we need to look to see if, um, the calculation includes that, because those are the intent of those programs. And if we're lifting people out of poverty with earned income tax credit and, um. Any of the other stuff that we're doing that are going back to people, we need to consider that, so we, we know that it's part of the FPL. And, um, if we're not doing it, I was just wondering if we could give an explanation as to kind of why we're not. So, um, I know you have work to do to get that information to us, so I would. Just add that to the list. If we're not, then why not?
I, I don't want to imply, Senator Lesser was asking whether it was included. I don't think he thinks it should be included. And I'm not certain that I think it should be included, so I don't, I want to be really clear on that, that I just think we need to find out if it is included.
But why wouldn't we want to include it? If we're doing all these programs?
I just don't think that it, that's not the point of the pro, of EITC.
But I thought the point of the program was to lift people out of poverty.
It is a, a portion thereof, but that doesn't lift people out of poverty. EITC is an assistance. In helping some people out, but it doesn't lift people out of, of poverty, uh. I think that poverty is, uh, when you're looking at a lot of different things going to the calculation of poverty. And whether your salary is a certain level, or your home costs a certain amount, or your heating assistance costs a certain amount, all of that. Doesn't necessarily lead to coming out of poverty per se. There are other costs that are associated with that, so. I think that that's part of the discussion that we could have once we get some data. Um, uh, so, uh, once.
Okay.
Other people look at it, we'll figure it out, but I don't think, I, I don't think Senator Lesser was saying that. I can tell you, I'm not saying that, so.
Okay, so I think that's definitely data we need to see then, because I'll be honest with you, Madam Chair. That's what we hear all the time, right? We're doing this, we're doing that. We're lifting people out of poverty. How many people have we lifted out of poverty with this, 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 and that, right? So if that's the intent of a program, then I think it should be considered. So I, I look forward to the conversation, but either way, we agree we need the data, so we'll start there.
Uh, Senator Semenara for the second time?
Yes, thank you for the indulgence again. I am just hearing from staff that public assistance is included in the census calculations for poverty status. But tax credits are not.
Right.
So, um, I'm just offering that up. It, it'll need to be verified, um, and then I look forward to the discussions in the future as well. Thank you.
Apparently, all of us are hearing from our respective staff at all different times, so to all staff out there, thank you for the information. Let's see, Representative Walker for the second time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I first want to sort of, uh, on, on, um, Representative Nuccio's question and everything, I also want to. Add my two cents to that, that I don't think that we make these programs to lift people out of poverty immediately. But we give them the, the, um, opportunity to help address some of the problems that they're experiencing because of poverty. but we give them the, the opportunity to help address some of the problems that they're experiencing because of poverty so that they can hopefully within time change their, their economic status. It is not something that's going to happen overnight. And we've seen that happen too many times, especially with childcare. When people get a raise, it gives them maybe a few dollars more than what the levels are for, for care for kids. And then they end up getting bumped off of care for kids and they end up going back to the level of poverty because they are scrounging to find childcare that they can afford. So we have, I mean, we don't want to keep beating people back and forth over the poverty line when they, they hit one ball and they go back and go back and forth. That's not helping them. That is just giving us that, that, that false sense of security that we have resolved something. We haven't resolved it. So I think we, we, we've got to be very careful about that. And I also have very concerns, big concerns about this. And I, I want to ask Madam Chair the question, or maybe I ask DSS the question. Is there a timeframe on this that we have to vote this today? I'm just curious.
Let me, let me find out. When do you have to turn this, this waiver in?
September 1st.
September 1?
Yes.
September 1?
Yeah, I know, trying to get two committees together is like pulling hair. I, I hear Susan glaring at me already through the microphone. So, I know, I know her dear. But yeah, it, it, the insecurity of these formulas. And, and I want to go back to the fact that we're using 1996 and, you know, we've known this, some, I mean, we haven't known this, at least legislators. I never knew that we were using 1996. Somebody has known that we're using 1996 poverty levels and data and everything like that, which somebody should have raised their hand. Uh, what did, what did you say, Tammy? 28 years? Somebody, 20 years, five years? I mean, so now we're getting this information, but we're expected to accept the transition that is being laid out to us to address it all of a sudden. And I, I, I guess I want to see the formula. I want to understand how we do this. So if we voted out and we, we find that our next public hearing that we are going to have about the formula and about this really shows some flaws, we're going to have to figure this out. Because community action agencies, no matter where they are, whether they're city or town, and I really don't like saying that the cities get it all because that, that, that's, 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 that's not true. We, if you drive through our cities, you see many of the same types of communities that we see in the suburbs because poverty is poverty. But what we do, we just, we just package it a little differently. But it's the same struggles for everybody. So we can't choose which, which one we should be just leaning on. I think we should be looking at it equitably and I believe that. And I think that we also tend to be a little bit more rigid sometimes when some community action agencies have a, have a flaw and it, it's kept over their heads for years and years and years. So I think we have some emotional aspects in this, in this process too. I just feel that we need to have better information. We need to understand. And then we need to also have a conversation with our federal legislators because they need to know what the federal requirements are and how they're impacting their constituents because they, they are also their constituents in this. I don't think that they realize any of this. And I don't think that they had the idea that the changes were going to end up costing, I'll be honest, New Haven, two, two caseworkers. We can't afford to lose caseworkers in New Haven and that's what this would, would transition to. And I have a real problem with that. So I, I, I have to make my decisions on how I'm going to vote. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I would remind you, it's not just cities and suburbs. Us in the rural communities want to be recognized.
I'm sorry, I, I gotta remember, city and rural.
And rural Connecticut.
And rural, okay. We got three, three pockets, all three. Thank you.
So I have no more questions for you. Well, actually I do have one question. If like the ABI waiver two, we're going to look at doing an amendment later in the year, is it possible for us to do an amendment on this waiver also around the same time if we get different data over the next little bit of time?
I, I will need to go check, but yes.
If you could let us know that, or maybe you can check with people while we go to the next three people to speak and let me know. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Jamie Arbor. Is Jamie Arbor here? Okay, I know that you've listened to us ask a lot of questions. You have three minutes, sir. Okay, very good. Go ahead, just identify yourself.
Jamie Arbor, Executive Director for the Supported Living Group. It's Connecticut's largest and premier brain injury support program. Honorable members of the Connecticut Appropriations Committee and Human Service Committee. The current discourse surrounding the amendment of the acquired brain injury waiver one program and the renewal and amendment of acquired brain injury waiver two program definitely demands further scrutiny. It is imperative that we address the glaring omissions within these proposals, particularly the lack of provisions to resolve the ongoing Medicaid reimbursement crisis in Connecticut and the insufficient increase in available slot numbers for ABI waiver two. First, let us consider the Medicaid reimbursement crisis that continues to strain our healthcare infrastructure. The current reimbursement rates are not only inadequate but are actively contributing to a system that is unsustainable for providers and ultimately detrimental to those who rely on these services. Without adjusting the reimbursement framework, we are effectively compromising the quality of care available to brain injury survivors throughout the state. This is negligence and has far reaching implications, not just for service providers, but for the vulnerable individuals who depend on these services for their well-being and community stability. Furthermore, the existing backlog in the ABI waiver two program is a testament to the system's failure to meet the growing needs of our community. A five-year waitlist is not just a bureaucratic inconvenience. It is a moral failing that leaves countless individuals without the support that they urgently require. When we, when we compare this to neighboring states such as New York and Massachusetts, which have actually increased their allotments of waiver-associated slots respectively in 2024 to 1,256 and 3,400, the disparity is stark and inexcusable. These states have recognized the necessity of expanding their programs to better serve brain injury survivors while Connecticut lags, leaving many to suffer in silence in an ever-expanding epidemic. In conclusion, I urge this committee to consider the profound implications of these omissions. The failure to address the Medicaid reimbursement rate and the stagnant number of ABI waiver two slots reflect a broader disregard for the needs of the brain injury survivors in our state. It is within your power to enact the changes necessary to rectify these issues, ensuring that our waiver programs are not merely symbolic but are robust, effective, and just. Thank you for your attention to this critical matter.
Um, thank you. You know, we're coming back on the ABI waiver. So we're not letting, we're not letting it slide at all.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, we will be calling them back if they don't come back.
Thank you.
All right. Up next is David Maderos.
Hello, my name is David Maderos and I'm with ABI Resources. I'm a father, a husband, and a brain injury survivor myself. I've been in this field for 30 years, almost 30 years. I know this waiver very, very well. Currently, I'd like to show you this right here. These are all the problems, 52 pages worth of problems with the ABI waiver program that has, this information has been submitted to everyone here. And this was submitted back in November of last year. The Republican Party is the only one that, that has reached out to us to, to ask questions about this and have an actual concern for brain injury survivors. But this picture here is much larger than just brain injury survivors. What's happening to the population of brain injury survivors in Connecticut also reflect all of the programs that are managed by DSS. DSS has a tremendous amount of work with very little staff. They're doing their absolute best to make, to make the best out of a very horrible situation. The answer isn't funding more. The answer is, is pretty simplistic and you all have received this as well. These are the solutions that can be, can be answered very, very well. We're talking about funding that is approximately $6 to $10 billion a year. And we have no mechanism of monitoring and managing and transparency with any of these programs. We're talking about people that have been on life support, people that have been hurt, families that are struggling, people that are going to the register with an EBT card that doesn't work, wheelchairs that are broken, uh, things can't get fixed. There is a nightmare of problems that are happening in Connecticut, not only for the brain injury population, but for disabled people and their families. This needs to be corrected. DSS FOIA? See, you guys can't fix problems if you don't know that they exist. And there is a systematic, and I don't know if, what caused it, but there is a systematic problem here where people can't advocate for themselves. If they're having problems, they shouldn't have to hire an attorney just to get some attention or to get their problems answered. We are talking about people that can't afford a cup of coffee sometimes. Families that have, uh, you know, um, families that are just really, really struggling. I know I only have three minutes up here. But what I would like to say is we have an opportunity here to make a very big difference in the lives of so many people here in Connecticut. We all depend on you.
Like, thank you.
My, my last statement, I just want to say one last thing. When we make decisions, I always make decisions like this. If they answer these three questions-
Okay, we're not going into three questions.
Yeah, well-
We're all set.
No, Ms. Olsteen, I sent you this information.
You may have.
And you did, oh, I did. And the reason why you don't, because are you using your government email address or are you using your private?
No, I, I have, uh, I thank you for your comments. I appreciate your comments. But I do a lot of work in the disability community, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I strongly support that.
Now, sir, your time is up.
CT Gov starts using their email address.
I use my own, thank you. I use CT Gov, thank you. It's not CT Gov, it's CGA.CT.gov. We don't have the CT Gov email system. Thank you. Appreciate it. Up next is Rhonda Evans. Wait a minute, no, no. No, not some, not somebody that's going to be that rude to people. Thank you, no, Kathy, I appreciate it. I don't think he needs to, I don't think you, I think I've already addressed that. Thank you though. I appreciate it, representatives. Thank you.
Kathy.
Rhonda Evans, please.
Good morning, distinguished chairpersons, vice chairs, ranking members, and members of the Appropriations, Human Services, and Public Health Committees. My name is Rhonda Evans and I'm the Executive Director of the Connecticut Association for Community Action. Thank you for holding this public hearing for, on the fiscal year, fiscal year 2025 Community Services Block Grant Allocation Plan. The Connecticut Association for Community Action, or CAFCA, is the state association that works with Connecticut's nine community action agencies who are the state and federally designated anti-poverty agencies serving over 200,000 low-income people in, or in each of Connecticut's 169 cities and towns. CSBG funding is essential to the CAAs to help residents in need both now and in the future. You have my testimony has been provided, I'm not going to read it all, but I do have a few comments I'd just like to share with you. Well, CAFCA understands that the CSBG allocation formula outlined in, outlined in the plan, it still will be, means that three agencies will receive reduced funding for CSBG while that is not clearly demonstrated in the plan as presented. Last year, as was indicated, the, the Community Action Network received notification that, that we needed to redo the allocation plan, which as, as many people have already stated, we, we agree that using outdated poverty level, that there was a need to revisit that. However, when the final, as part of that process, CAFCA was provided with the opportunity to provide our suggestions on a plan for a revised allocation formula. In June of 2023, we provided a couple of, of suggestions to the Department of Social Services for their consideration. Uh, when we, and then when, after some time, we then received notification from them that they rejected the plans that we had submitted and that they had developed their own plan based on some of the data points that we had also suggested. So in, ultimately, they just, it, it ended up that there were three agencies that were going to be receiving reduced funding moving forward. And so while we understood the calculation, we told it was, we were told it was what it is, basically. But what we, what we did also at request was for a two-year hold harmless period to allow those two, those three different agencies, a period of time to transition and to get themselves in a position to be able to provide continuity of services without an interruption to benefits and resources to their customers. And we were told that we could only allow, or at that time, they could only approve a one-year hold harmless because they, the plan had to be submitted annually. And so the, the, the funding that has been, and so the, the plan has been provided for this year continues to hold those three agencies with reduced funding. The new formula was carried forward into the 25 plan with the same reductions. And the new allocation formula was developed and implemented using a reduction in the funding to the three CAAs. And basically what it is, is that the plan, these dollars were allocated from the, the carryforward that, that they talked about was carried forward into the new plan. And it, a lot, and what, what happened is that there's a COLA that is now being masked. Through, what's happening is that the increase of the COLA, which was previously provided through state dollars, is now being directly taken from the CSBG allocation, which ultimately still means that agencies are receiving less dollars than they would have received had we had our request to carry, to continue to hold those three agencies harmless for the second year. Uh, and it's masked because it's shown as a COLA. And so in other words-
Thank you. Appreciate it. We're all set. We have your testimony.
Okay.
We'll take it into consideration. Uh, Representative McCarty is asked to make a statement. Not, we're not calling anybody else back, she can make a statement. And then we're going to move on to voting.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for the privilege. I would just like to state publicly that to Mr. Maderos that we have received your testimony. We have received your solutions. And I was pleased today to hear from DSS that we will have additional information. The providers will be brought back in and we're all going to work collaboratively. But I do want to recognize our chair does try very hard to recognize everyone. And so I appreciate this opportunity to let you know that you were heard by our party and by our colleagues. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you, Representative McCarty. I would also say that, uh, this isn't a party issue. I know we're in the middle of a campaign. This is not a party issue. And there is nobody that listens to people because they are a Democrat or a Republican. This has had multiple hearings and multiple committees. And we all listen to everything. I have constituents and we all have constituents that are on the ABI waiver. I've been in many, 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 many meetings with them. None of us hide behind anything and I find that offensive. And I will not tolerate that in this meeting by anybody. And now I'm going to close this public hearing and we're going to move on to the votes. Again, votes are not left open. Votes are not left open. I let you all know that you should be contacting your colleagues who are not here in the room and make sure that they are available. and make sure that they are available to vote. We are going to start voting. We're going to take a five-minute break while we transition over to voting, so at 11:55
It's 11:55, so I'd like to call to order.
Senator Lesser? We're gonna, we're gonna, everybody take their seats again, please. Senator Lesser, are you running the Human Services meeting? I don't see him. Senator Lesser, can you hear me? Now I can hear you, yes.
Okay.
Are you running the Services meeting?
I am running the Human Services meeting.
Okay, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, I'd like to call to order the August 22 meeting of the Human Services Committee. I would like to entertain a motion and a second to approve the ABI two waiver renewal application.
Rep. Case, so move.
Second.
Representative, Representative Dayton.
Motion made by Representative, Case seconded by Representative Dayton. Any discussion? I, I will just open it up by indicating, I know we had a lot of discussion about this and including some testimony from the public. We have more work to do on this renewal application, but we heard from DSS a willingness to work with advocates and to work with the committees represented here to get us more information about the waitlist, and also to work with the advocates to try to address their concerns, so that we will be amending, if this goes forward today, we'll be amending the waiver in the next few months before it can go into effect for CMS to take advantage, to, to take into consideration. Is there any other discussion from members of the committee? Yes, Representative Case.
Thank you, Senator Lesser. I just want to say to our colleagues, I do want some support, everybody to support this today with the concerns that we have. They were all brought out in discussion, and for me, it's, it's troubling that we have agencies that we come forward and we don't have all the information. Having people on a brain injury waiver for such a long period of time on a waitlist, having, not knowing what the CAAs and everybody's getting for funding, representing an area that has 900 square miles, they have one CAA, we just need to make sure that things are done on the up and up, and I think everybody has brought this forward, we need to look at these formulas, these formulas cannot be outdated more than one or two years, I believe, and I think we just really need to, as a group, take a hard look at how we do this. I mean, we fight every year for the ADD waiver, the autism waiver, there are so many waivers out there, and I know, just as Rep. Johnson's on here, we fight hard for the, for the people who are in the homeless population, it's up to 13%, and some of this waiver stuff affects these people to get them back on their feet. And if you don't see what's going on in these rural, rural areas, it's just as bad down in the cities. Let's pull together, let's get this first step moving forward, and hopefully we can garner the information, and we can make some, some better decisions on how we're going to fund things and get some people off of these waitlists. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Representative. Are there other comments or questions from members of the committee? Seeing none, the clerk will please call the roll.
Senator Lesser.
Senator Lesser in the affirmative.
Representative Gilchrist.
Representative Gilchrist votes yes.
Senator Semenara.
Senator Semenara votes yes.
Representative Case.
Representative Case votes yes.
Senator Gaston. Representative Dayton.
Representative Dayton votes yes.
Senator Mar.
Senator Mar votes yes.
Representative Butler.
Representative Butler votes yes.
Representative Comey.
Representative Comey votes yes.
Representative Cook.
Representative Cook votes yes.
Representative Fortier.
Representative Fortier votes yes.
Representative Heffernan.
Representative Heffernan votes yes.
Representative Hughes.
Representative Hughes votes yes.
Representative Johnson.
Representative Johnson votes yes.
Representative Kitt.
Representative Kitt votes yes.
Representative Leeper.
Representative Leeper votes yes.
Representative Santiago.
Santiago votes yes.
Representative Buckby. Representative Ferraro. Representative Master Francesco. Representative Pizzuto.
Rep. Pizzuto votes yes.
Could you turn your camera on for me?
Yes, Rep. Pizzuto votes yes.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the Human Services Committee that have not yet casted their vote and would like to do so now? Thank you.
Madam Clerk, when you are ready, please announce the tally.
Total number of voting, 17, those voting a, 17, those voting nay, zero, those abstaining zero, and five absent not voting. Thank you.
Motion passes. I'd like to now entertain a motion and a second to approve the federal fiscal year 25 Community Services Block Grant Allocation Plan. Is there a motion?
So moved, Rep. Case.
Motion made by Representative Hughes, seconded by Representative Case.
Thank you.
I know that there's been a lot of discussion about this formula, and also on the need to update it from the 1996 baseline that we were using. Would ask that this move forward today, but with, we heard a lot of concerns, including from the community action agencies and from representatives of the districts that are affected by the potential cut in funding, so do have an urgent need to get some more information from DSS and to continue to work with the affected communities going forward. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Senator Lesser.
Senator Lesser in the affirmative.
Representative Gilchrist.
Representative Gilchrist votes yes.
Senator Semenara.
Senator Semenara votes yes.
Representative Case.
Representative Case votes yes.
Senator Gaston. Representative Dayton.
Representative Dayton votes yes.
Senator Mar, oops, sorry, Senator Mar votes yes.
Thank you. Representative Butler.
Representative Butler votes yes.
Representative Comey.
Representative Comey votes yes.
Representative Cook.
Representative Cook votes yes.
Representative Fortier.
Representative Fortier votes yes.
Representative Heffernan.
Representative Heffernan votes no.
Representative Hughes.
Representative Hughes votes yes.
Representative Johnson.
Representative Johnson votes yes.
Representative Kitt.
Representative Kitt votes yes.
One more time for me, please.
Representative Kitt votes yes.
Thank you. Representative Leeper.
Representative Leeper votes yes.
We lost her. Representative Buckby. Representative Ferraro. Representative Master Francesco. Representative Pizzuto.
Representative Pizzuto votes yes.
Representative Paletta. Are there any other members of the Human Services Committee that have not yet casted their vote and would like to do so now? Thank you.
Madam Clerk, when you are ready, please announce the tally.
Total number of voting, 16, those voting a, 15, those voting nay, one, those abstaining zero, and those absent not voting, five. Thank you.
Thank you. The Human Services Committee now stands in recess.
I will call the ABI waiver renewal and CSBG plan procedures meeting to order, and I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve ABI number two waiver renewal application.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Moved by Senator Burtell, is there a second, seconded by Representative Del Nicky? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Administrator, could you call the roll, please?
Senator Austin.
Senator Austin votes in the affirmative.
Representative Walker.
Representative Walker votes in the affirmative, but I expect DSS to have a hearing and follow up with the changes that we think we might have to make for this, for the, some of the amendments, so I will vote yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Senator Hartley. Representative Exum. Representative Paris. Senator Burtell.
Good afternoon, Madam Administrator. Senator Burtell votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon. Representative Nuccio.
Representative Nuccio votes yes.
Senator Anwar.
Senator Anwar votes yes.
Representative Baker.
Representative Baker votes yes.
Representative Balinski.
Representative Balinski votes aye.
Representative Callahan.
Sorry, Sue, it took me a second. Representative Callahan votes yes.
Thank you. Representative Chaleski.
Representative Chaleski votes yes.
Representative Curry.
Representative Curry votes yes.
Representative Dayton.
Representative Dayton votes yes, and I echo my good co-chair on the House side's comments, would love to see more information on this going forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Representative DiCaprio.
DiCaprio votes yes.
Representative Delaney.
Representative Delaney in the affirmative.
Representative Del Nicky. Representative Dylan.
Representative Dylan votes no.
Actually, on the phone with a constituent, crying.
Representative Felipe.
Representative Felipe votes yes.
Senator Flexer.
Senator Flexer votes yes.
Representative Foncello.
Representative Foncello votes yes.
Representative Garibay.
Representative Garibay votes yes.
Representative Gibson. Representative Gilchrist.
Representative Gilchrist votes yes.
Senator Gordon.
Senator Gordon votes yes.
Representative Hadad.
Representative Hall.
Representative Harrison. Representative Hoxa. Representative Johnson.
Representative Johnson votes yes.
Representative Kana.
Representative Kana votes yes.
Representative Kennedy.
Kennedy votes yes.
One more time for me, please, ma'am.
Kennedy votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Kushner.
Senator Kushner votes yes.
Senator Lesser.
Senator Lesser, yes.
Senator Marks.
Senator Marks, yes.
Representative McCarty.
Representative McCarty votes yes.
Senator McCrory.
Senator McCrory votes yes.
Representative Nolan.
Good morning, ma'am. Representative Nolan.
Representative Nolan votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, sir. Representative Porter? Representative Osborne?
Representative Osborne votes yes.
Representative Reyes? Representative Rosario?
Representative Rosario votes in the affirmative.
Representative Ruttigliano?
Rep Ruttigliano votes yes.
Representative Ryan?
Representative Ryan votes yes.
One more time for me, sir.
Representative Ryan still votes yes.
Thank you, sir. Representative Sanchez?
Representative Sanchez votes yes.
Senator Slapp?
Senator Slapp votes yes.
Representative Sims?
Representative Sims votes in the affirmative.
Senator Summers? Representative Tursiak? Senator Winfield?
Senator Winfield in the affirmative.
Representative Zawistowski? Are there any members of the Appropriations Committee who have not yet cast their vote who would like to do so at this time?
Representative Harrison votes yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Administrator, let me know the tally when you're finished.
Total number voting thirty-nine, those voting a thirty-eight, those voting nay one, those abstaining zero, those absent not voting fourteen.
Motion passes. I'll also now ask a mo- for a motion in a second to approve the FFY twenty-five Community Services Block Grant Allocation Plan.
So moved.
By Representative McCarty, seconded by Representative Balinski. Uh, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Administrator, could you call the roll?
Senator Austin.
Senator Austin votes in the affirmative.
Representative Walker?
Representative Walker votes in the affirmative with the expectation of having a hearing with DSS about the rates in the formula. Thank you, ma'am.
Senator Hartley? Representative Exum? Representative Paris? Senator Burtell?
Senator Burtell votes in the affirmative.
Representative Nuccio?
Representative Nuccio votes yes.
Senator Anwar?
Senator Anwar votes yes.
Representative Baker?
Representative Baker votes yes.
Representative Balinski?
Yes, thank you, Madam Administrator.
Representative Callahan?
Representative Callahan votes yes.
Representative Candelaria? Representative Chaleski?
Representative Chaleski votes yes.
Representative Curry? Representative Dayton?
Representative Dayton votes yes.
Representative DiCaprio?
DiCaprio votes yes.
Representative Delaney?
Representative Delaney in the affirmative.
Representative Del Nicky? Representative Dylan?
Representative Dylan votes no.
Representative Felipe?
Representative Felipe votes yes.
Senator Flexer?
Senator Flexer votes yes.
Representative Foncello?
Representative Foncello votes yes.
Representative Garibay?
Representative Garibay votes yes.
Representative Gibson? Representative Gilchrist?
Representative Gilchrist votes yes.
Senator Gordon?
Senator Gordon votes yes.
Representative Gonzalez? Representative Haddad? Representative Paul? Representative Harrison?
Representative Harrison votes yes.
I need your camera on, please, ma'am.
How's that?
Hey! Perfect. Let's do it again. Representative Harrison?
Representative Harrison votes yes.
Thank you. Representative Hoxa?
Rep Hoxa votes yes.
Representative Johnson?
Representative Johnson votes yes.
Representative Connor?
Connor votes yes.
Representative Kennedy?
Kennedy votes yes.
Senator Kushner?
Senator Kushner votes yes.
Senator Lesser?
Senator Lesser votes yes.
One more time, sir.
Lesser votes yes.
Thank you. Senator Marks?
Senator Marks votes yes.
Representative McCarty?
Representative McCarty votes yes.
Senator McCrory?
Senator McCrory votes yes.
Representative Nolan?
Representative Nolan in the affirmative.
Representative Porter? Representative Osborne?
Representative Osborne votes yes.
Representative Reyes? Representative Rosario?
Representative Rosario in the affirmative.
Representative Ruttigliano?
Rep Ruttigliano votes yes.
Representative Ryan?
Representative Ryan votes yes.
Representative Sanchez?
Representative Sanchez votes yes.
Senator Slapp?
Senator Slapp votes yes.
Representative Sims?
Representative Sims votes in the affirmative.
Senator Summers? Representative Tursiak? Senator Winfield? Senator Winfield? Keep going? Representative Zawistowski? Are there any members of the Appropriations Committee who have not yet cast their vote who would like to do so at this time? Total number voting thirty-nine, those voting a thirty-eight, those voting nay one, those abstaining zero, those absent not voting fourteen. Representative Del Nicky, uh, and, um, uh, Representative McCarty are in, uh, in the votes.
All, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? Uh, uh, Senator Lesser, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you. Uh, at this point, I would like to, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn the Human Services Committee. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Representative Dayton, seconded by?
Second? Senator Semenara?
Seconded by Senator Semenara, sorry, I couldn't see. Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Committee is adjourned.
Madam Administrator, do we have any other business coming before the committee?
Oh, yes, we do, Madam Chair.
When?
So, well, um, I believe September sixteenth. The Human Services, Public Health, and Appropriations Committee will be hearing the remainder of the Health and Human Services Block Grant Allocation Plan. So block grant season is not over, my friends.
All righty, September sixteenth, we'll see everybody then.
Yeah, stay tuned.
Thank you.